meeting to order. Like take this opportunity to welcome you out tonight. Hopefully you will return. This time we would ask that you turn off all electronic devices. If you would play with me. Board, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business. You are indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all of your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our city, for all of our staff members, the citizens of this great city, and this council. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. Impact your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Give us insight to lead with integrity, that our decisions may reflect what is right and good. Be with us in our deliberations, and help us to be wise in the decisions we make, for the good of all, those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Thank you for being our source of guidance. Amen. Next item on the agenda will be the code of ethics. This time we recognize City Clerk, Ms. Ward. Ms. Ward?
Members of council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest in matters that are before us. At this time, I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
None.
None.
Thank you. Next item, approval of minutes, November 20th, 2012, City Council meeting. Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Next item is adoption of the agenda.
Will we adopt the agenda as...
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Consider the agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the filing items, please let us know. Item 1A, to reappoint Mark Christman to the Airport Authority for a three-year term. B, to adopt a memorandum of agreement between the City of Burlington and the North Carolina Sedimentation Control Commission for continued local enforcement of the Sedimentation Pollution Control Act. C, to declare Motorola Gold Elite Radio Consoles, which are no longer compatible as surplus property, and to approve the donation of the consoles to Guilford Metro 911 Pursuit 2, North Carolina General Statue 160A-274 disposition to other governments. D, to approve a final plan for Roger C. Davis and wife Carolyn B. Davis. The property is located on the east side of Old Trail Road and south of Anthony Road, as shown on plans by Simmons Engineering and Survey Incorporated, dated October 8th, 2012, and containing two lots. E, Budget Amendment 2013-24 Piedmont Tribe Council of Governments Grant, Area Agency on Aging Title III. D, Health Promotion in Disease, as spelled out in your agenda. F, Budget Amendment 2013-25 Rico Appropriations, as spelled out in the agenda. G, Budget Amendment 2013-26 Police 911 Upgrades, as spelled out in your agenda. H, Budget Amendment 2013-27 Recreation Piedmont Tribe Council of Governors Senior Center General Purpose Funding Grant, as spelled out in your agenda.
We approve the consent agenda.
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Next item on the agenda is under new business. Two, City Council will consider waiving bulk collection fees for the period of Monday, February 4th, 2013, through Friday, March 29th, 2013. This time we'd recognize Mr. Gunn, Sanitation Superintendent. Welcome, Mr. Gunn.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you, and good evening. I'd like to start by letting you know that in the past you've had the waived bulk fee during the years 2012 and 2011. In 2010, you did not, and we're proposing that this, we have to waive the fee again in 2013, as stated, February the 4th, 2013, through March the 29th.
Harris, you want to kind of give a count low to be what that would include?
Yes, sir. What we have is, we have the limbs, waive, we're waiving that, the yard waste debris, and bulk junk. In your pamphlet, I believe you have a listing of those type items that describe, under each one of those categories, what's to be waived. I also would like to make mention to you that in 2010, when you did not have it, you had 1,400 tons of this debris during the same timeframe. In 2011, it looks like it was the first time it was advertised, and folks took really advantage of it, and it was 2,500 tons of materials. In 2012, it was advertised again, and it was around 1,800 tons of materials. What I'm estimating with those two years, plus the third, the year that you did not do it, the estimate for 2012, for the same timeframe, would be 1,300, about 1,300, 1,500 tons.
Any questions for Mr. Gunn?
I think this is an outstanding event for the community. It's, it was one that we tried several years back, and it's obviously called on, and people are very complimentary of the city for this, providing this. So, thank you very much for what you do.
Let me just, for public's information, how do we go, how do they go about, they got stuff that needs to be picked up? Are they responsible for taking it to a certain place, put it on the corner, make a phone call, or it's just part of the regular pickup?
Sir, this would be all part of your regular pickup. You just take, put it out on the side of the road, and we'll be happy to pick it up for you. This is, this is an opportunity for those citizens especially who don't have trucks and vans and trailers, you know, to carry things to the landfill. And as we come into our Christmas season, and we move forward, out with the, in with the new, out with the old type, I guess you could say the cliche there, and gives us an opportunity, it gives them an opportunity also to get it out and beautify the city as well. And as your neighbors are out there doing this type work in their yards and getting the materials out there, it affords maybe the neighbor next door to do likewise, and helping make the city a cleaner place.
And Rachel does an outstanding job, too, advertising it for us. So, good.
Mayor, if you recall, we interfaced this with the CBC program efforts in terms of community cleanup. Is that a part of this process of implementing this the last two years to help with those efforts?
Good. Any other comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Gunn.
Sir.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the waiving of the bulk collection fees for the period of Monday, February 4th, 2013, through Friday, March 29th, 2013.
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Thank you. Brings us to public comment period. We have several here. I'll just go right down the list. First person is Jerry Lewis, and I would make sure you're reminded that when you come up, you state your name and your address for us, okay? Mr. Lewis, thank you and welcome.
How you doing, sir? Never been to one of these, so I'm gonna try. I remember my name's Jerry Lewis. My post office box is 31 here in Burlington. I live at 1528 South Neben Street. The rhythm here is the smoking ban that supposedly was passed or about to be passed, and every time smoking comes up, it's by an internet next to a restaurant or, you know, strip mall. Well, I've been to about every internet place in Alamance County. Don't know how many of y'all smoke, don't know if any of you smoke, which really ain't no big deal. But, the main issue is AIA and the restaurant next door. Now, gentlemen, I, like I said, I don't know how many of you smoke. I'll show you something if I may. This is not cigarettes, it's a vapor cigarette. Up at AIA, the waitress next door in the restaurant stands outside between the two buildings, smoking. She goes back inside, waits on customers. If you don't smoke, you're gonna smell it. Now, anybody that smokes is gonna, are they gonna blow it up, or whatever, it's gonna get on their clothes. Now, when she goes back inside and comes up two foot from you to fill your tea, or fill your coffee, or bring your food, yes, you're gonna smell smoke. Common sense is gonna tell you that. It's not coming out of the building next door. If it was, Dollar General next side, on the right-hand side of it, they'd be complaining. They're not complaining. The fact is, the smoke that they're smelling, if they smell any smoke, over the grease and oils and the whatever they use to cook the stuff with, is coming off of the waitress, it's not coming out of the building. They have the best, and there's, I know there's more internet people in here, but they have the best exhaust system in Alamance County. I don't know how many fans they've got in there, but non-smoking people go in there and sit down in the smoking area to play. And if it was that bad, they wouldn't go in there. It's not right, everybody says, well, non-smokers have their rights, non-smokers have their rights. Don't smokers have their rights also? I mean, just look at it that way. It's not coming from the buildings that the smoke is coming from, it's coming from the person delivering the food, is any way you look at it. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Next, Christina Shang.
Hi. I appreciate the time the mayor and the council has taken to listen to our situation. I have five updated versions of the...
Just to make sure for the record, you pronounce your name and address. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Christina. I'm one of three full-time managers at AIA Sweepstakes, which is located on 3555 South Church Street in Burlington. The address that I live at is 720K Boone Station Drive, which is also in Burlington. AIA Sweepstakes, we would like to apply for a variance against this ordinance that was passed on November 20th. We feel that the soup, the new smoking ordinance that was passed, is difficult to enforce, it affects our business. 65% of our clientele is affected by it. We feel that it was passed in haste, and that it was, it wasn't properly advertised. We feel specifically targeted and attacked by this ordinance. As out of the 160 establishments that are affected, our name is the only one that's in the newspapers. This Sunday, when Jenna Barnes, the reporter from Channel 14 News came and spoke with us, I asked her if there was anyone else that she was speaking with that day, since there are 160 different establishments that are affected. She says no. We're the only ones that she's speaking with that day. We feel that the ordinance was passed with bias and class discrimination. And a little history or a little background on our store, our store is 2,000 square feet, and it's in between the Tuscany Grill and the Dollar General. 65% of our store is smoking, so minusing the bathrooms and the storage room, about 1,200 of that, 1,200 square feet of that space is smoking. In that 1,200 square feet space, we have six industrial, industrial filters, and we have one exhaust system with three pipes that sucks all the smoking, smoke in the smoking room, out through the pipes, through the ceiling, and outside. And then new air is brought in through the outdoor intake vent. So, for Mr. Cole to say that the smoke is coming from our building into his, it's just not possible. In the beginning, the first and second month that we've been open, we've been open about 13 months. The first and second month was the only time that we heard a complaint from them, and it was from the landlord. The landlord had called and told us that Mr. Cole is saying that the smoke from our building is going into his store. We took immediate action, we added three filters, and we implemented the new exhaust system. We share a wall, that smoking room inside our store shares a wall with the Tuscany Grill on the left, and the Dollar General on the right. Mr. Cole is saying that his smoke is going into his side. Well, then how come the Dollar General has made no, zero complaints? Some people might say that the Dollar General is a convenience store, you don't actually have to sit down and eat, and you wouldn't be smelling the smoke. However, I've gone over there, and I've actually personally stood by that wall for two hours. I didn't smell any smoke. I've asked managers on duty, they've said no, they don't have a problem with the smoke. We've been inside the Tuscany Grill on less than, no ten, um, no, no less than 10 occasions to buy pizza for our customers. I conduct my interviews for store employees at their store. This Thursday, I think this past Thursday, me and my family, we went and we ate at the Tuscany Grill for about two hours. We could smell no smoke coming from our place into their store. And the table in front of us, we asked the gentleman and their family if they could smell smoke. They said they're, they smell no smoke, or else they would have left. Our family, we've been inside the restaurant business for 55 years, and we just recently left in the last two years. So, we understand Mr. Cole's case, and we understand how the economy is bad and times are tough, which is why we provide free drinks, free food, free amendments for our customers. For him to say that our store is, for him to say that his decline in business is because of our store is completely not true. Mr. Cole charges $10 for a large cheese, a large cheese pizza, and about $1.59 for every additional topping. For that $1.59, you can get a large pepperoni pizza at Cece's, at Caesar's, at Domino's, for much cheaper. His decline in business has nothing to do with us. It might have something to do with his expensive menu, his waitress is smoking, from other competition, or it might also be because of his hours that he's open. He's not open on Tuesdays. For the most part, he comes at 12 to 1 o'clock. We can see, we can see when he comes through our office, when we're at the store. He's not open a lot of times during lunch hours, and he's not open a lot of times during dinner hours. So, to say that our smoke, our business is affecting his, has no basis. He's doing fine on his own. He doesn't need any of our, any of our help. And we understand that Sweepstakes don't have the best reputation. Most people think it's dirty, it's smoke-filled, the clientele is not good, we don't clean up after ourselves. But, we really do clean up after ourselves, and I run a pretty tight ship at the AIA Sweepstakes. We have six filters, we have the exhaust systems. We take all complaints very seriously. And I've just heard about this new ordinance that was passed last week from Don Bullis, who's also a Sweepstakes store owner at Village Market. Before that, we didn't even know that this was an issue. Mr. Cole has never spoken to us any of the times that we've gone inside his stores. He's never made any mention of it, other than the first two months that we were open. Mr. Cole's real complaint might be the parking. We do understand that our business is gradually building, and it might be taking up part of his parking. But, from my understanding, that parking didn't get very far, and I, we feel as if he's using the smoking ordinance to try to run us out of business. We, the last reason we like for our smoking ordinance is because we feel that it'd be better for the general public. 65% of our customers, since Sunday, the, since the ordinance was in effect, they've actually gone outside into the sidewalk area, and they're smoking outside of our store. The ordinance would allow them to continue smoking inside our smoking room, which is a controlled environment with filters and exhaust systems. We just feel it'd be better for the general public, for them to smoke inside a controlled environment versus outside, where the general public would all have to smell the smoke. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, Pat Dodds.
Thank you. My name is Pat Dodds. I live at 7107 Clarion Oaks Court in Gibsonville, Tennessee. I have, I don't understand, when you passed this ordinance, were any tests done to see if the smoke was actually going into the restaurant?
Where, did you say Tennessee?
No. Did I? I'm originally from Tennessee, and my niece just got here. I guess Tennessee's on the brain. North Carolina, sorry. Yeah, I flew in for this meeting, sorry. Were any tests actually done to see if the smoke was going into his restaurant? Has he done any tests? Has anything officially been done to see if he's actually, his receipts have gone down? Or is this all on his say-so? And as a smoker, I go in, and as a gambler, I go into different gambling establishments, and AIA is top-notch. There is absolutely no problem. The smoking room, you can go in, like, like they say, a lot of the non-smokers come back to the smoking room. And I really don't know why this ordinance is being passed. There, there, if, if we can't smell their kitchen smells, how can they smell our smoke? I just don't understand this, this whole ordinance, and I don't know how it got passed with no one knowing anything about it. But, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Reva Godwin, Goodwin? I apologize if I didn't pronounce it correctly.
That happens a lot.
I'm sorry.
I'm Reva Goodwin. I live on 1753 Powerline Road, Elon. AIA is a real nice, neat, clean place. It's very, it keeps a lot of people's minds. It's not only gambling, it's keeping a lot of people's minds. Older people come in to pass their time away, or have somewhere to go and play. So, it's not really like gambling, I don't think. And I don't know why the guy next door wants to complain, you know, and hurt somebody else's business because his business is not doing good. And so, I think we should have our right to smoke, 'cause I'm a smoker. So, I think we should have our right to smoke, and I think it's very unfair for the gentleman to do that.
Thank you, ma'am. Brings us to City Council comments. Any comments from council?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make sure we could introduce...
I've got that on the list.
You had that on your list?
Absolutely.
You did enough, yeah.
Citizens appreciation, the police department, December 14th, 3 to 5. Friday, December 14th, the holiday magic of Dickens' Christmas, starting at the depot. I'm assuming that the Christmas tree lighting and that will take place at 6. It's from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Also, would like to welcome Amy Nelson. Welcome, Amy. And she is the Planning and Economic Director. She is the one to replace Mr. Harkrader. Also, to follow up with our last conversation that we had last meeting about the retreat, I've got three dates written down, and I guess we can go from there. January 31st, February 14th, February 21st. If you could let Renee know what fits your schedule the best out of those three, and then we'll go from there. January 31st, February 14th, February 21st. I figured, since we, about a half a day, like we did last year, 8 to 12. Also, a deadline for topics would be January 4th or before. Again, you can turn those in to Ms. Ward. Any comments in reference to the retreats, the dates, or the topics? Not sure of the venue yet. We'll have to decide about that. Again, I repeat, just let Ms. Ward know the dates, which date best fits your schedule, and if this doesn't work, we'll, we'll go back to the drawing board with some more dates. Any other comments from council? Mr., oh, was that Ms. Nelson the one you were, okay, good. Any other comments from council? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Same.
Second. All in favor?